Will the meeting please come to order? You please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, we're all here. Martha is here by phone. Are there any changes to the consent agenda tonight? Okay, so the consent agenda tonight consists of approval of the minutes of the March 23rd, 2020 council meeting, approval of April 3rd, 2020 payroll in the amount of $117,757.38, a resolution authorizing funds transfer, resolution of employment at the Park and Recreation Department, acceptance of the Personnel Committee minutes, approval of liquor license for Casey's General Store, number 3327 South, approval of total claims in the amount of $1,051,592.79, and there are three claims more than $75,000, Alliant Energy of $75,751.45, Maxwell Construction $692.471.82, and Piper Sadler for $80,000. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson. Yes. Rasmussen. Martha, could you hear that?
I was in absentia.
Okay.
I was not at the last meeting.
Okay. Ham.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to public appearances, I received an email, which you can see here, from a Bernadette Cardinal, about burning during this time, and basically it says, "Dear Mayor, we have enough challenges to our respiratory systems due to the pandemic. Please immediately put into effect a total ban on burning within city limits. It's the most responsible and compassionate approach." I ended up telling her, this is normally where she would appear before the, you know, she would request to appear here, and would she mind if I sent the email to you guys so then you could decide if you wanted to do something temporarily? And she gave my permission to, you know, have this kind of public appearance, but she's not really here. So, you know, it's up for you guys, really, if you want to do something temporarily. And if you, you know, so I'm just letting it be known that that was a request.
I just noticed that the information was in the water of the utility bill that says when burning is allowed. And just to remind, it's only the months of April, October, November. It's only Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. So if we were banning it from now through the end of the month, it would probably be, what is that, six days, seven days? It's not a lot of days, and it might be very confusing to people when they just got that information that said they were allowed to burn for those times. But my heart goes out to people who have respiratory issues. The DNR may at some point just have a statewide ban on open burning within cities because of the increased asthma and respiratory problems that people are facing. A few years ago, the council removed Wednesdays, so we went down 25% fewer days that people were allowed to burn. But I understand what she's asking. I think it would just be very confusing for people when we're only looking at six or seven more open burning days in a month, and then they can't burn again until October, when hopefully this will all be over.
Okay.
I've got a question. It's a little, I guess a little off track, and I hate to throw it out right now, but I have, somebody in my area was contacting me about people using a burn barrel.
Daily and late at night, and just throwing a hot dog on a stick over it and say they're cooking. Is, and I may need to talk to Scott about this, is, what are the, what are, what are the restrictions to that?
So the loophole is if you are recreationally burning, that's not considered open burning. So you could typically, you could actually technically have a fire pit you could use anytime. Open burning is only allowed during the daylight on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, the months of April, October, and November, when wind conditions aren't, aren't bad.
And they only burn yard waste, right?
Exactly.
So they burn trash or anything like that.
Yeah, they're not supposed to do that, and it's supposed, if they're calling it a recreational fire, it has to be su, well, I think even open burning has to be supervised all the time. So they have to be there all the time. They can't just burn it and then, or start the burn barrel and then leave.
Yeah, so you get right.
Even though they hang a hot dog over it.
But, but there is no restrictions on using a burn barrel. It does, it does not follow the same restrictions as open burn?
Yeah, it's a gray area.
I would say yes. It does, it should be followed the same unless it's like a fire pit where they're, they are actually. But, yeah, it is a little bit of a gray area.
Okay.
And are they burning trash in it? If they're burning trash, then there is policy against that.
No. Well, from what I understand, no, but maybe it's something we need to define.
We could have Scott, we could have Scott educate them a little bit.
Well, and that's been the issue, I think.
If I pick up sticks around my yard, and I have a fire pit on my deck, and I burn it in my fire pit, I'm okay.
Right.
Doesn't matter what time of year it is.
It's when you pile it up in your driveway that we're restricting.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so I take that to mean that we'll leave things as they are right now? Is that what you're thinking?
Since we're approaching almost the middle of the month, and we just have a few more days, I, and especially since it's been kind of rainy, and there might be some people still doing some work here this spring, I would hate to stop it until the fall, because then they'd have to deal with it all summer yet, too.
It would be hard to enforce, you know.
Yeah.
These officers are stretched as it is, so.
I think, I think also this is a nice time to say, get to know your neighbors, you know, and if you know your neighbor has asthma, or certainly if somebody's sick right now, to.
Right, give them a break.
Yeah, not to participate in your neighbor burning, just to be neighborly, so. Okay, let's move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first resolution, consideration of tax abatement applications for 906 South Third Street.
Move, we approve the tax abatement application for 906 South Third Street.
Then moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Rasmussen. Martha.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimously approved. The next action item, consideration of a change order, number 25 for the wastewater treatment plant, improvements bid package number one, treatment for facility improvements. The increase is $20,253.85. I believe Melanie's going to give us a little more detail.
All right, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I'm just going to go over both change orders why I'm here. The first change order, number 25, is way missing, is for $20,253.85. It is to add an explosion-proof electric heater to the control building, the basement of the control building. This was previously heated by the digesters, which have now been removed. Other parts of the building are heated with a standard heater, but this portion of the building still has some wastewater gases in it, which is why we have to go through the explosion-proof electric heater. This wasn't part of the original design, because we weren't planning on having some stuff in the basement, and with some other changes, we ended up having things in the basement of the treatment plant and therefore need to heat. The other change order is for $140,862, and this is to replace the hand railing and grading on the two new oxidation ditches. The large change order that you had a couple months ago for the oxidation ditches was the mechanical part, and so this is the additional handrail and grading, and in looking at our budget, we figure if we're going to get a new equipment, we have room to get new handrail. So with these two change orders, we are looking at a net change order of, for the entire project, of $645,000. And so that still is leaving us around $225,000 left in contingency after these two change orders.
Melanie?
Yes?
What percentage of the project is finished? In other words, do you expect us to exceed the contingency before we get finished?
So we are almost complete with the original scope of the project. We're looking, right now, we're doing punchless items, so no significant work left on the original part of the project. The main portion that remains is the, the change order for the clarifiers. So the change order for the clarifiers are $700,000. Um, so, God. That's five percent of the project left?
I didn't get that from her.
Five percent of the project left.
Okay. She said there's a $700,000 change order coming up?
Melanie, did you say there's a $700,000 change order coming?
No, we, you passed it a couple months or weeks ago.
That's already done, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's for the oxidation ditches.
So there's $225 left, there's no expectations for any more change orders on the horizon?
Did you hear, Doug?
Nothing on the horizon.
So move, we approve this change order for $20,253.85. Change order number, what is it?
Twenty-five.
But you got to say what it's for, because that's the best part.
For the explosion-proof electric unit heater to control building sludge pump room.
Explosion-proof, I'll second that.
Well, yeah, every chemistry lab needs an explosion-proof refrigerator, and every wastewater plant needs one or two, I guess.
Second by Hallie. Any more discussion? If not, please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Okay. Martha?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, change order number 26.
Melanie, did you cover that in the last description?
Yes.
Motion to approve change order number 26.
Moved by Anderson.
You have to describe what it's for.
Second by Gandy. Any more discussion? Please call the roll. Katie.
Yes.
And Paul. Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Martha?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, approved unanimously.
Just, just so you know, Mayor, our city attorney just called me on my cellphone, so now we have our city attorney on cellphone also.
Okay, great. So we have city attorney on. Thank you. Okay, next action item, consideration of amendment to engineering agreement with French Reniker. It's for the sanitary sewer conveyance improvements for step two, and we have Steve and Pedrick on the line here with us. Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, I guess I'm going to go ahead and start out, just going over the reference document on the agenda there, which is change order one. We've been working with Maxwell Construction, the contractor on the project, for the last month or two here, to identify some cost savings measures that we could come up with as a part of this project. Maxwell brought the first item to our attention. They suggested a couple areas where they could do a less expensive method of boring to save the city some money. And then, working with Melanie and Steve Redinger and Maxwell, we also identified an area near the water treatment plant where we were able to change the alignment of the sewer slightly to save some money. So change order one was approved for a total reduction of almost $98,000 to Maxwell's construction contract. In order to do all of that, we had to put together revised drawing sheet, get BNR to sign off on the change order, and several other items. So that's the purpose for this amendment, was our additional work associated with coming up with the revised design for the cost savings change order. Then just looking at the amendment, I can go through it if you want, I mean, it boils down to a $5,700 addition. I don't know if you, if the council has any specific questions related to it.
So more or less, you're asking us to approve $5,700 to save $97,000?
Exactly.
That doesn't happen very often.
I move that we approve the amendment to the engineering agreement, agreement with French Reniker Associates.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item, consideration of agreement between the Iowa Department of Corrections and the City of Fairfield. Aaron.
This is that agreement that we talked about, where we were going to utilize Department of Corrections, well, they're not personnel, to help with yard work and work with throughout parks and stuff like that. It's just the formalized agreement that we talked about earlier. Yes.
Yes, this was, I was just thinking of the timing of how long ago that was.
It's been.
Months.
Two to three months.
Yeah, I don't remember it either. How many people do you think would be hired at a given time?
I think the most we were looking at is six people.
These are nonviolent offenders and?
Absolutely. They go through a screening process where, in order to get out, this is, these are mostly people that are just about ready to get released, so they're doing, it's kind of that transit, it's one of those transition things that they can do to, for, for their release.
It's a work release for the prisoner.
More or less, yes, yep, yep.
And there's no liability concern on the city's part?
Not really. It actually, it's actually pretty decent. We have to supervise them, but any kind of, like, workers' comp stuff is all covered by the Department of Corrections.
And we pay them?
Yeah, change per hour. It really is. It's, it's, it's very minimal.
But the Iowa Department of Corrections drops them off and picks them up at the end of the day.
I think, no, we'll have to go pick them up and drop them off, but they provide the food, they provide the work clothes. We do have to provide for the PPE for whatever they're doing, but, you know, the equipment and stuff, we provide, but we have to, but they provide a lot, you know, they provide their meal for the day and a lot of good stuff.
From what facility are they coming? What location?
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant. $5.04 a day.
$5 a day?
Uh huh.
Yeah, and if they do overtime, it's $0.56 an hour.
Right.
Yeah. I didn't understand, because I, I had question marks. It says that the city, the agency, does provide the clothing, and I thought, what? But I think what you're talking about is if there's specific.
Yes.
Clothing, if we had something where they were really going to get.
Right, so gloves or vests, or, yeah, stuff like that is what, what we have to provide, safety equipment.
Who do you anticipate will go pick them up?
I, I, that's something Calvin is going to work on, whether it be Pam, or Ed, or somebody else. I'm not sure what Calvin's decided on that. Calvin's heading that up.
Do we have a ban?
Again, Calvin's heading that up. I'm not sure what he's planning on doing.
I remember seeing a movie called Shawshank Redemption where, oh, Ward made quite a bit of racket.
Yes, yes.
Hiring out his inmates for something like that, pennies on the dollar, and underbidding, undercutting businesses out there. We're not doing something like that, are we?
No, we are actually supplementing, we are still hiring people to help us in the Parks Department. A lot of this is actually allowing us to get more work done than what we could. It's difficult to hire people for summer anymore. For some reason, not as many people want to work for the city, or work for the Parks Department, and spend their whole summer on a mower, or on a weed trimmer, or something like that. So, no, we're not, we're not not hiring people by hiring these folks. The City of Mount Pleasant utilizes this a lot, so it's just, and there's a lot of other local or, or more regional people that are using them over there also.
And the people that Temple Associates would be representing wouldn't be in this category of, what would it, are we competing with them?
I wouldn't think so. No, we're, we're talking about outdoor.
Manual labor.
Manual labor. Yeah.
And in the contract, we're not supposed to hire this type of labor versus somebody else.
Correct.
But roughly $0.50 an hour, a little bit more than that? Wow.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the contract between Iowa Department of Corrections and City of Fairfield.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any more discussion? If not, please call the roll. Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, great, that passed unanimously. Consideration of contract for CDBG administration assistance between Area 15 Regional Planning Commission and the City of Fairfield. This is for the new childcare facility.
Yep, this is just that, the Area 15 will actually administer the grant for the Jefferson County Kids project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, unanimously approved. Next action item, consideration to enter into sub-recipient agreement for federally-funded project with Jefferson County Kids.
We already did this, but the final numbers and stuff like that needed to be finalized and hashed out, so this is actually what that agreement's for.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen. So that is approved unanimously. Last action item here, approval of CDBG projects grants policies. So these are the policies that go along with this.
Pretty standard for what we've done over the past with CDGB grants, but that's the policies that the federal government requires us to follow.
Motion to approve. Moved by Anderson.
I'll second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Anderson.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Martha?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimously approved. We have a resolution, consideration of adoption emergency procedures for contagious disease. Aaron, you want to speak to that?
Do you want to talk about it, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. With, with the COVID-19 issues, we, we're starting to look at policies to make our employers, employees safer. Basically, what we're doing is looking at splitting up the streets, water, and sewer departments, to where we've got half of them working, and half of them's at home, where we can control where they're not going to be sick, or at least trying to prevent them from getting the virus. So what we're, so, in the end, we're trying to protect our employees. There's a number of cities and counties throughout the state that have already done something like this, so we're trying, we're, we're following suit, and again, we're trying to protect our employees.
We're, in passing this, we're actually implementing a policy that supersedes or increases the benefits to our employees over the family-first, for some coronavirus response act.
Correct, yeah.
It's going to be more beneficial to our employees than the existing federal legislation.
Right.
Which we're allowed to do.
Yep, and actually, the federal government pays up to two-thirds of the salary. We're proposing that we pay the full salary. We probably, or I should say, hopefully, will be able to get reimbursed for the two-thirds, but we might, we might not, but in our opinion, taking care of our employees and making sure they're safe is the most important thing.
So the city is going above and beyond what the, the federal government is requiring of us?
Correct.
That's good. And I, and I think, and I, as a participant in the meeting, I think that I want to thank the city administrator, in particular, our city clerk, Rebecca Lope, who I think worked very hard on putting together this policy.
Yep. The other request we do have, and we forgot about talking about it on Thursday, is that we make it retroactive to April 1st, just so that we cover our bases for the entire month.
And that's the other part. These two, in, in leading the administration here, there's not been anything in policy kind of guiding their steps. That's another thing we want, is that you guys would understand that this is a temporary measure, that we would vote on together to start, and, and we will vote on it again to end it, so that way, they have policy to be moving on and not just living in a, they're not walking on, having to walk on air, put that way. So that way, we're all in agreement of the steps and procedures that they all need to follow.
And so you're also saying that years down the road, if we have another situation, that would pertain to that situation, correct?
Yeah, we could enact this again at that time, of course, it'd be by council resolution, but we could reenact the, the policy again to put in place. So it's, it would be in place, and we, or we'd have a precedent set, I hate that word, but we would have a precedent set to put that in place in the future also, should, should it need to happen.
Right, it's temporary, it's a template. We could adjust it if something, something happens in the future which requires us to have something like this, but we could tailor that policy to fit the, fit the circumstances, for sure.
Great.
So I make the motion to adopt the resolution regarding for emergency procedures for contagious diseases effective April 1st, 2020. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.[1665.92]
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. That was approved unanimously. Uh, under the mayor's report, um, we'd like to refer the cell phone tower installation building application, uh, referred to, um, environmental and franchise committee chaired by Doug Flornoy. And, um, basically, I think Doug has been working with some citizens a little bit.
People call me, send me emails. They want to know what the rules are. And so I thought that'd be a good idea for us to take a look at it and...
Okay. Currently, we're just using a regular building permit. So they're going to look at it a little more detail and see if we, see if the council or the committee wants something more robust.
Yeah, I found a document online that came from the League of Cities that recommended how to manage these kinds of things, in particular for 5G. So I thought we might take a look at that and then see if we need to make any changes to the application.
Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to push that to Doug's committee.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that was passed. Um, regional planning affiliations policy board appointment. I'd like to appoint Aaron to attend these meetings. Uh, previously, Mayor Malloy, uh, was attending those meetings and, um, we'd like to, I'd like to have Aaron go to those meetings now and be part of that, that group. So I'd like a motion to appoint Aaron.
I made the motion that we have Aaron represent us at the regional planning affiliation policy board meetings.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? City attorney report. Do we have anything from John?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, John. Committee and board reports, ways and means?
Thank you, mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met this evening at 6:00 PM. Present at the meeting was myself, the chair, Paul Gandy, members Katie Anderson and Doug Flornoy, also the city administrator, Aaron Koike was present, and the mayor. And feel free to chime in if I don't get it right. We had one meeting, or one matter on the agenda, and that matter had to do with sewer water line replacement. Uh, there's a developer, private developer who are, who is developing the, what is known as the Loudon Building over on Broadway Street, and they're well along in their development of what's going to be, um, at the very least, 44, uh, low-income residential apartments in that building. They had asked, they, they had, um, they've done quite a bit of development, uh, and they, including, uh, some internal, internal development for water and sewer lines. But, uh, in their development, they determined that they didn't have enough of a water sewer line or enough of the diameter of a, of a pipe to be able to bring water in sewer, remove sewer and bring in water to the building. So they've come to the city asking if we could participate in some, to some extent, uh, in those additional expenses. After some discussion, the city is recommending to the council that we cover approximately half of those additional unanticipated costs by the, uh, by the corporation. The corporation's name, CBC Financial Corporation. I think what they're doing is a good thing. Their housing is a critical issue in this city and has been for some years. They've applied three or four times to, for a state program to allow them to build, uh, build out and develop low-income housing. And now they're in the process of where they expect to start, uh, people moving in in June, I believe. And they're expecting, they're looking for 90% occupancy by the end of this year, 2020. So it's a laudable, laudable project. Uh, and, uh, an unanticipated expense came up and they're asking the city for some assistance. We think it's fair and we're recommending to the council that we participate to the, to the tune of about 50% of the cost that they're anticipating.
Well, can I say one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, actually, there were two parts to this project. Sewer line, no.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer and a water line. And we're paying for the water line. Goes down the right-of-way on Broadway. They are going to pay for the storm sewer.
Right. That's our recommendation.
So the water line was about 16,022 and the sewer was 14...
Seven something.
Seven fifty-three.
Seven forty-three.
Yeah.
So basically, they're, they're paying for all the, the opening up and we're just helping finish paying for the line.
Delivering drinking water to the location.
Right. But they've already, they're already doing all the expense of opening everything up and covering it back up once everything's in place.
Yeah, they already installed and we're reimbursing them.
Right, okay.
And in addition to that, when they were renovating the building, they discovered that the rainwater that was being collected off the building was going into the sanitary sewer. So they redirected internally all that water to run into the storm sewer, which is what prompted them to put the extension in for the storm sewer down that part of Broadway. So they did us a big favor there. So I thought it was worthwhile. And they're putting in 44 units. They might be putting in more after that. So if they have good services down there, then they'll, they'll expand.
And the funding for this is coming from what account?
Water, water department.
All right. So the rest of us are funding it, just to be clear. Everyone in town is funding it.
The approximate math is that at 90% occupancy, the payback will be five years. The building will pay it back in five years. That's the rough estimate, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the occupancy at, we, I figured 80%, but they, uh, Jim figures they'll be in there, they'll be at 90% come next...
The end of the year.
End of this year. That we'll, we'll get, we'll receive our money back within, well, actually, I was figuring the whole 30. So it'll be quicker with the, uh, 16,000. So we'll, we'll get, we'll get reimbursed in quicker than what we were before. Yeah. I just want to make it clear because there is water service to the building, which is not, it's not a large enough main for what they're doing, so.
Well, it didn't come clear up to the building.
Well, no, there was service, there was service to the, to the building. There is current service. It's just, it wasn't big enough to service the whole 44 apartments. So they had to increase the service line.
Yeah, they had to go clear Sixth Street.
So, and in order to do that, they had to put a service line from the building all the way to Sixth Street where most people only have to go to the front of their house or building where, in this case, it would have been Broadway.
Yeah, that's what I want to clarify. Yeah, I wasn't saying, wasn't saying it quite right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, make no mistake, this is a for-profit corporation. They're in it to make, they're going to make, they're going to make money. That's the idea. But I think also they're going to bring much-needed housing to Fairfield. And if, from what we can, from the conversation, if we, what they didn't know, they wouldn't have been able to find out prior to the development. So we think this is a sort of a fair, a fair allocation of the cost. That's, that's, I think, what was the, the gist of our discussion. But certainly anyone else want to add who was present?
Well, this had come to Economic Development Committee last year. And the discussion at that time was that this is, would be setting a precedent of the city contributing to private development in a way that we haven't before. So, you know, again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just think it means to be explicitly clear, we're socializing this cost, where we're basically spreading it out so that everybody who has a water bill is funding this improvement for, as you said, a for-profit corporation. If we're okay with that, because of the positive repercussion on our housing and the hope for return on investment, then, you know, we could say that's fair. But just to make it clear, that's what we're doing.
And that was my question is, where and when did this come up that it was not anticipated? Um, because it is a private company putting it in, right? Or is this something that we had started?
No, we didn't start it. They had actually started, this, the request came up late last year prior to, it was, it was real close to changing council, but it was already in the works and the construction was already going. Um, I guess my, my thought process in this whole thing is I want to, obviously, because of the precedent setting, I wanted the council of some sort to make a, make a decision. It's, but it's also economic development-wise, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Um, but yeah, there is a precedent set, being set here too.
Right. And that's what concerns me because somebody else can be lax in the future and then wanting to flip back to that precedent and saying, "Yeah, well, you did it before, so do it for me too." Um, I think we got to have a discussion each and every time on something like this and not, and that's just what I'm saying.
Oh, agree.
Just if, if we say there's a precedent there, it doesn't mean it's just an automatic, but it has to be discussed whether they were doing their due diligence to get projects done and having those supplies and those things anticipated.
I think the big, the big thing to look at with this one would be the size, the scope of this one. We're, we're talking about 44 units in that building. You know, i-if we were talking about a house and for some reason their service line didn't work and then they're saying, "Well, we're renovating it to sell it," you know, obviously a residence we wouldn't be getting involved in because it's...
Right.
A single individual and it's one thing. This, there's a bigger scope here. It's also a low to moderate income housing unit, units where we're helping...
Which we do need.
A big, a bigger segment of our community that needs that type of housing too, so.
Refresh me too. I remember parts of this. They're, they're talking about putting another unit across the street where there's currently a parking lot, right?
In, in the future, to the south, there's a possibility that they would put in another 34, so that'd be a 30-plus unit senior housing.
And the main that's run from Sixth right now is not large enough to maintain, to handle both those buildings, correct?
Well, the two-inch wasn't. The four-inch should be.
That's my, my question. Going east of there, what's the size of the main going east on Broadway?
Well, the, the, if you go east of Sixth Street, the main there is three-inch. The north and south on Sixth is an eight-inch main.
Yeah, it's a bigger one, but on Broad. So this would be like extending the main line on Broadway down to that cul-de-sac and provide water for those locations so people can build on it. That's my look at it. It's going down the right-of-way. It's just like extending the main down Broadway. We're calling on the service line now because...
Is Melanie still on? Melanie?
Yes.
We, I remember discussing this at some point. Was, was the, the line that's run from Sixth down Broadway large enough to support 77, roughly 77 apartments?
As far as what I'll say domestic use, um, the four-inch will be large enough.
Okay.
But state code, and I'm not going to say will, shall, my best guess is that it will be large enough. Um, but state code requires, um, a six-inch line if you're going to have a hydrant, a fire hydrant on it.
Okay.
So there'll be no fire hydrant placed at that corner of that block?
Where you could have, you could have it off.
On the corner, I, I mean, down, further down. Right, it can be down, okay.
On Sixth Street, of course it could because there's a six-inch right there.
Right. Eight-inch. Eight-inch. Okay. All right. That was my question.
So it's certainly something we would consider on a case-by-case basis. In that sense, I don't know that we're actually setting a precedent, other than we'll consider these requests on a case-by-case basis. Doesn't go any further than that, I don't think. So our recommendation to this council is that we approve the contribution by the city through the water department budget, 16,122 dollars.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy to approve, uh, the water department paying 16,122 dollars to pay for that water line, that expanded water line. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Toohill.
No?
No.
Okay. Rasmussen? And Martha dropped off.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So, okay. So that's five to two. So that motion passes.
Who was the other? Who was the other two? I don't know what it against.
Well, Martha's not here.
She wouldn't be, she'd just be asked.
Well, I'm just saying, it doesn't, you know, we have two basically votes that are not positive, so.
She doesn't get counted in though.
So, okay. Um, water and sewer.
Um, we met tonight before the meeting. It was, uh, myself, Tom Toohill, Michael, Hallie was there, and Rebecca Loper. And we had three items on the agenda tonight. Um, one of them was a credit back to Mahavaca Studios. Did I say that?
Yeah.
All right. Mahavaca Studios. Um, they were out of state for a while. There was some water running through there. The water department went over and determined that it was not going through the sewer. So we refunded the sewer portion of the charge, or we recommend that we refund the sewer portion of the charge of $906.67 for the period, um, that it was, that it was determined that it was happening. Um, the second one was, we were looking at the deposits that are required for, uh, residents to have water, uh, hookups to their, to their residence. Um, we have currently been $75 and it's been that way since, I believe, the late, I think Rebecca said the late 90s or early 90s even. Um, we, Michael said that he's been to a few other meetings. It's lower than any other one that he's seen. Our average bill is 110 to 120 dollars. Um, that deposit's not going to cover one-month bill if needed. So we recommend that we change it to 125 dollars deposit. And currently, right now, that 75 dollars or the deposit is refundable after 12 months if they're paid in good standing. And we recommend that we maintain that deposit until, um, the account is closed. So, um, I guess there was two recommendations there. One, to change the, the deposit from 75 to 125, and the other one is to, uh, hold on to the deposit until the closure of the account. Um, the third topic that came up tonight was, currently, we're using Credit Bureau Services of Iowa to, um, or Credit Bureau Services, um, to collect on unpaid accounts. And as of right now, through Credit Bureau Services, we have 215,694.77 in unpaid, um, water utility bills. Um, our collection rate with them is not very good. We have not been receiving much back. They get to keep 40%. So even if they collected on everything they had, we would, um, end up with 129,416.86. Um, the Iowa Department of Administrative Services has a program in which, um, you can collect unpaid utility bills through, um, or city utility bills through, um, either the tax refund, uh, individual tax refund, through lottery winnings, through the Iowa treasure hunt, the great treasure hunt, and I believe casinos. Um, and there's a $7 fee per collected account. Um, our collection rate's going to go way up. Our fee's going to go way down. It kind of made sense, I think, to do it this way. We had to do due diligence in notifying the account holder that, you know, send out two letters and tell them that this is the process that will take place if the account is not paid, um, by such and such date after, after termination. So, um, we recommended that we, we look into that and go ahead and, and, and proceed with that. So, uh, those are the only three things that we had on our account tonight, or on our agenda tonight. Um, any, if there's any questions, um, I'm sure myself or Michael could, hopefully.
What were the thoughts on, uh, the reason the deposit amount, kind of stretch my put-on low-income individuals to meet that higher minimum?
It actually came up. We were discussing that. Um, the, number one, being, um, well below what a average bill is, we felt that the deposit account, the deposit is really to, um, uh, cover us on an unpaid bill. And that is well below what an average bill would be. Um, many, many of the other, um, entities that are charging deposits are much higher than that. Um, we weren't going, we, we don't want to be punitive with it. That's, that was our, our main concern. Um, so we, we felt that 125 would, would fall into that range, that, that it would cover both sides comfortably.
Does the average bill is 125 dollars, huh?
Hundred, well, it was a little lower than that, but 125 would cover the...
Was the average household size two or three?
So, I know ours is well above that, but we're not average. So.
Do you want a motion for each one of these different items?
Uh, I think probably. So the first one was, um, the, the credit for Mahavaca Studios, uh, for the sewer portion of their water bill of 906.67.
So I move we approve that reimbursement.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Flornoy and second by Gandy to refund to Mahavaca Studios. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that motion was passed. Martha's not voting.
The deposit will actually be done by ordinance, need to be done by ordinance.
Okay.
If you want to vote, to go ahead and move forward with that, that's fine.
Okay. So the second one would be moving forward with changing the deposit, the, the water department deposit from 75 to 125.
I move that we authorize that change from 75 to 125 dollars for the deposit on the water, water account.
Okay.
I second.
Does that get referred to a committee?
Came from committee.
It came from committee.
It just came from committee.
But then just refer to the attorney to rewrite the ordinance or, Aaron, you rewrite it. Just got to go in there and change the number, right?
Yeah, we'll rewrite it somehow.
Okay, so moved by Flornoy, second by Ham, to, uh, move to change this by ordinance, uh, that the water deposit, deposit be moved from 75 to 125. Um, but there was a second portion of that.
Yeah, that it's not refunded after 12 months, but it's refunded after the account is closed.
Right.
So I'll make my motion to...
So you want to amend your motion there, that those two items be changed there?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, yeah. Why, why would you not refund it after 12 months?
I guess our question was, why would you refund it after 12 months?
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be a security deposit, similar to what you would put down for an apartment.
Is that what it's supposed to be, a security deposit?
Right.
And it's there for making sure that everyone, all their bills are paid. So when they're done living in that space and they close...
So when they're done living in that space and they close the account, then they get it back.
Or a lot of people use that as their last bill today.
Or if they die in their house after 60 years, goes into the estate, right? I mean, we could hold on to them for that long, right?
Yeah.
So it might be a negative return on investment, keeping track of all those accounts, but see what happens.
Yeah.
So if we hold it and we don't refund it, does it go into an escrow account?
Well, it would only ever be allowed, yeah, we can only ever use it to cover a bill they didn't pay.
So go to the great Iowa Treasury Hunt account or something like that.
The great, yeah.
If we couldn't find the owner of the money.
Do you want to tell them how much are outstanding currently?
129,000, you said?
Two hundred and some.
Yeah, 215,694.77.
How many years is that? How many years back is that?
Uh, that's what's on file with Credit Bureau Services right now, that they're trying to collect on, so...
And we write off every once in a while, don't we?
Well, and like I said, like, it's similar to this other thing, we all have to cover those bills.
Mm-hmm.
And we pay our bill.
Yep.
It's not quite similar, because we don't get anything out of it.
Yeah, right.
Much different, as a matter of fact.
They're getting out of not paying the bill.
Yeah, they do.
But I bet you some of those go back quite a ways. But I'd be nice to have, know to get an annual report on how much money isn't paid every year in the year. I'd just be curious.
All right.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to change the water deposits from 75 to 125 and that we keep the deposit until the count is closed. I think we'll call a roll on that. Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Uh, just to be clear, though, as Melanie once said, the water that we sell is almost 100% profit, it's almost no cost in preparing, I suppose. I don't know if that's true or not, but even though it's 200 and some thousand dollars, that's not the true cost to the city for preparing that water, I guess.
Well, it's sewer and trash also.
Yeah, there's trash in there in the sewer, but...
Recycling and trash is more or less a pass-through. They pay us, we pay Waste Management.
So, so a portion of that goes...
That's the total utility bill, I just wondered.
Right, correct. So, all right, so...
The third one.
Third one, okay.
Yeah.
So the third one was, we recommend changing our method of collection on unpaid accounts from Credit Bureau Services to, uh, the Iowa Department of Administrative Services to collect through tax refunds, lottery, um, Great Iowa Treasure Hunt, casinos, I think was it, um, um, to, um, to collect on unpaid accounts.
That's just using the, the data the state has to find out.
Correct.
The person, right?
Yep.
So moved.
We, we supply them with, uh, information, and they said now in the Water Department, they've already started collecting social security numbers on new hookups, so we're one step ahead of that already, so... Sorry.
That's all right. So it's been moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Hey, Aaron, when someone applies for a, an account for water, do we ever check to see if they owe us any money from past accounts?
Yes.
We have records that...
Yes.
They, actually, they were paying 125 dollar deposit already if they've had a previous account that was not in good standing, so...
I see.
So they were already paying the 125 deposit.
We're gonna increase that, or just leave it?
No, we're gonna leave, we're just gonna go 125 across the board.
All righty. Administrators report, Aaron?
Um, a couple of things, uh, the Waste Management contract has been put out to RFP, or the, I should say, the Solid Waste Collection and Recycling has been put out to RFP. Um, we sent it to Conley, we sent it to Waste Management, and I also posted it on the Iowa League of Cities for any responses. The, as of right now, the only person that's responded back is obviously Waste Management. Um, I have a request to pay the, uh, in, in, in my city administrator's contract, it, it says that we could pay, or would pay for my dues to Iowa City, Iowa City Managers Association, along with the ICMA, which is the international, international, I haven't done it up, up till this point, but I am requesting that we, that I update my dues with the ICMA, uh, but it says in the contract that I should, uh, get the approval prior to doing it, so I am making that request to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other questions or discussion?
How much is it?
Uh, it's based on your salary, it's, uh, 500 and some bucks this year.
Both of them together?
No, just, uh, just the International City Managers Association.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you. And that's all I have for administrator.
Okay, you're gonna, is Melanie gonna talk about the project update, or?
Normally, she...
Yeah, I'm still here.
You, you have a project update?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, so I must see any questions? Not a real good format for answering and asking questions with you guys, but a couple things that I do want to point out. Uh, the CUP2 is progressing very nicely. Uh, I'll remind the public to take caution on East Burlington Avenue as well as Glasgow. The contractors have some seting areas near those two roads, and they're working rather close to travel away, um, but right now, they're working on the foring under Burlington Avenue, which is, uh, what the crews are doing out over on that end of town. Um, other projects are working on getting raps up. The seating was completed on Libertyville Road and as well on, as well as on the Stone and Eighth Street project. Right now, we have Burlington and Ninth pedestrian improvements out for bid. Now, this is actually, uh, informal, or formal quote process, so we won't be having a public hearing on that, but bids are due April 30th. Um, back to the city, and then we'll review it at the first meeting in May. And other than that, we're trying to get a few things, um, trying to take advantage of a few things being closed down, continuing, working on the library chiller, and then also the airport, um, runway repairs are happening right now. It's a good time for the runway to be closed, not a lot of air traffic. So things are moving nicely, uh, on all of the projects. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have on that.
Any questions?
All right, and then the other thing that I wanted to report to you guys tonight is the EPA annual report. I submit these on behalf of the city in April and October, and I'll say this is the best report that we've gotten to send to EPA since I've been with the city. Uh, there's actually no request changes to the schedule, meaning that we are on schedule with what EPA has asked us to be. Uh, we also only had one sanitary sewer overflow in the last six months, and that was just in this last March due to, uh, people flushing unflushable wipes down the sewer and causing an overflow. So a really good report to send to EPA. Uh, we continue with this annual report, um, for probably another five years or so. I do not need counsel action on the EPA report, it's more of an FYI.
Did you catch that?
Yeah.
She does not need council action on that. It's, she does not need council action on the report, it's just an FYI.
Okay, thanks.
That's great news. And just in case the public didn't hear, she's asking for citizens to watch out for workers near, or regard, on East Burlington and on Glasgow Road.
And we shouldn't be flushing wash, flushable wipes down the toilet, because...
They aren't actually flushable.
They're not flushable, and they contribute to sanitary system overflows.
Overflows, we, we've put some information out on that.
Which could cost us money if we had fined, we haven't been fined, but could.
Right, but we have put out information, we had, I think, there, it was out on Facebook, it was out on our city website, talked to media to put it out a little bit, and, uh, so we, we, we've been as proactive with that as we possibly can.
There were pictures.
Yes.
No T-shirts, though.
We did that on purpose.
Apparently LA had T-shirts down their system.
That doesn't surprise me.
Well, Aaron, Aaron had a picture on Facebook, I thought.
No, we posted it in the comments section, that was a strategic move, we didn't want to gross people out. I talked to someone from Waste Water, they think that the problem cleared up because the wipes are no longer available, not because people aren't flushing them, so it's a good thing that they ran out.
We're gonna have a second wave coming?
I hope not.
Hope not, yeah.
All righty, anything else?
I just have a quick question, what project is going on, on 34 through town, like downtown, over to Jet Stop?
Downtown, street lighting.
That's all street lighting?
That's all street lighting.
So are they just tapping electricity further beyond? Okay.
They're, they're, they're run, well, they're still running, there are some lights that are going west, or I'm sorry, east of Corb, on Broad, on Burlington. Yes, there are a few lights on that.
That would be street, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe three or four.
Okay. And we do anticipate, once all those lights are up, they'll be better illuminated, even on the north side.
Correct. That, right now, where they've put up the new poles, they don't have all the lights[1757.91]